Diana Davis, 942 David Lane. So I guess a couple of things in order. One, I find it disappointing that no amendments have been made to the site plan since August 6th, even though we obviously identified the relevant items of the code that should have been taken into account prior to planning board approval. Particularly those items which stipulate that the town planning board should require of the developer a survey of existing mature streets trees. I don't think that it's within keeping of the code to then provide the developer with the planning permission under the promise that they potentially might revise the site design. So to that end, our group has actually provided all of you with evidence of existing mature trees on the site. In fact, there were eighty-two of them all throughout the site. So exhaustive effort on our part, something that the developer really should have commissioned. If he really does feel that mature trees add value to a property, then that's something that really this is a woodlot and that's that should be the priority. It's also existing habitat and that needs to be taken into account. You know, the town planning board has with its remit the ability to insist upon the preservation of that existing vegetation and wildlife habitat pursuant to 296-16 item 13, right? So I think, you know, really where we're coming from is we don't want to see planning permission given until such time as the site plan has actually been revised in good faith to show that there is a genuine attempt to preserve the wildlife and habitat. As I understand it, given that we have proven that there are mature stands of trees throughout the site, failure to have required that documentation from the developer indicates a decision on the part of the town planning board that such was not required and that would be erroneous and that would be grounds for the citizens to file an Article 78. Further to that, conservation board's report was quite frankly false. They're obviously not all dead ash and small trees. Clearly, somebody from the conservation board didn't actually walk the property.
Actually, they actually did for a year or so.
Well, they obviously didn't measure the trees because I can tell you that there are eighty-two trees that are quite large. And they're not just maples. So I also want to correct a falsehood. The town actually did identify this as a parcel worthy of conservation. Mitchell probably doesn't remember this, but I spoke with him in the summer of 2022 when our group was working with the town, looking into basically assembling a database of parcels worthy of preservation. And this was on our list. It was put together by John Behan, who some of you might remember was the consultant that worked on the 2005 referendum which passed. Although the town decided not to pursue a referendum, that parcel still remains one worthy of consideration for conservation because of its proximity to the Birdsong Trail and its being across from obviously the rec center. In fact, we would love for the town to purchase this property and turn it into a park.
Okay, you almost done now? We're not, I don't want to hear a whole lit, everything over the years.
I think she's making good points. You have to listen. It's very disrespectful, young girl.
I'm not being...
It is very disrespectful, your tone.
What did I say in the first place?
You have said a couple of things tonight and I'm a very good listener as a teacher. And I don't like, I don't like the tone. Please let her speak. She's making excellent points.
We gave three minutes. I set ground rules for the decan. That's over three minutes. You're not...
She's making excellent points.
I am a must-uh if I just...
Preservation of the lanes. It's just not right.
We did receive, we did receive your paperwork.
Yeah.
We received it at 4:30. What would you expect these board members to do with this when it got to the town hall at 4:30? When are we supposed to review this?
Well, I guess I would have hoped that tonight wasn't a fait accompli given that it is a public hearing and that given that we submitted it within the public comment period, which includes tonight, it needs to be taken into consideration. A decision should not be made based upon evidence that you didn't have. So, yeah.
Now, back just a little bit on the trees though. All the developments over the years, where you live, where we all live, there were trees. How do you get, somebody suggested an R3, go in there and mark the trees? What happens if you've got a really big tree and it ends up having to be like the middle of the road is? See, this is all we can do is try and save the best trees. Once a development is approved and a house is going to be built.
I think you come to more than that. I think you come to more than that. There are certain neighborhoods in Webster which are heavily treed. And just because it costs the developer more money, I feel that the responsibility here is towards the people of Webster and the habitats of Webster, not towards the developer, who, you know, inherited the property from his parents, is a property manager of other properties. This is not his retirement. He's not going to be destitute, okay? I do feel that this is a case of convenience over, you know, convenience being chosen and the well-being of the people of Webster being sacrificed if this gets, you know, developed as it is. I mean, the fact that not even a single amendment was made since August, that's just total disregard. It's clearly in the code. I clearly mentioned the item in the code that the developer should have adhered to. Go get somebody out there and survey the trees. Make amendments to the site plan. You can't approve it without that having been put forward. That's ground, that's legal standing right there. I'm sorry.
Well, there isn't anybody disagreeing with you on that. I said earlier, this isn't, the intent here was to take a lead agency and move forward with comments that need to be addressed. We are not approving this.
Okay.
See what I'm saying?
Yep.
This is, we're putting a cart before the horse. It's like you guys got three bits and I've done deal on this. There's a lot of issues that need to be resolved.
And I'm sure you can understand. It's an emotional issue for a lot of people. And I think honestly, it's just because you know that this is like huge priority for everybody in Webster. There's so little, it's like everybody is very emotionally attached now to whatever woods we have left because there's not a lot left. And so, you know, I do appreciate everything that you guys are doing. And, you know, the fact that it's a secret type one is huge. But I really do want to see the developer do more. We actually mocked up very unprofessionally of, I mean, I'm sure it's not like to engineering standards, but we did do a model of the type of site if they want to look at it, keeping the tree line close to the houses and keeping mature vegetation throughout. So that's all I have to say.
All right, that's good.
Thank you.
I'm Cecilia Robello. That name might strike a bell because you've got pictures of wildlife from 1291 Foothill Circle. I disagree with the DEC. In there is a picture of a hot pink, neon hot pink cardinal with no black markings. I'm not an ornithologist. I chose not to contact Cornell because quite honestly, I didn't want a bunch of Twitters coming through my backyard and turning it into a research site. That bird comes from the property under consideration. And you will see the amount of wildlife and you will see the trails leading from that property into my backyard since 1986. In response to not getting the paperwork about the trees, we expected when we woke up this morning that it would have been delivered by the developer as we thought was requested. And when we woke up this morning, we discovered it was not there. And so, a member of the group spent their time going out with tape measures and doing the job of what I consider to be the developer's job. We did it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Yes, sir. My name is Chuck Robello. Same address as the previous speaker. 1291 Foothill Circle, my property immediately abuts this development to the entire side of my property, the backside of my property, abuts this proposed development.
Not well.
I appreciate that the property is sent to R3. I can accept that because so is mine. On the other hand, we can't pick and choose what elements of the town code we follow. We must follow them all. The town code specifies that properties must, new properties must minimize impact on existing vegetation and wildlife. This proposed development cannot be put in place and simultaneously fill that element of the town code. You have the citations on some of our literature. The other element of the town code is, has to do with impact on adjacent properties. Not just ours, but the Birdsong Trail did not exist until a few years ago. Bird Sanctuary, excuse me, did not exist until a few years ago. This proposed development immediately abuts it and the impact on that for wildlife and vegetation will be severe. Wildlife currently abiding in the property under consideration is going to be forced off that property and onto the Bird Sanctuary Trail and adjacent properties. They've got nowhere else to live and you seem to have a chance to look at the document, the water wildlife. We fully documented large and diverse and characteristic fauna that call the property empty now. I submit to you that it is impossible to develop this property and still follow those two elements of the code. That is, the impact on vegetation, wildlife that is required, the minimization of impact on existing properties. I do not believe that this property can be developed and be consistent and compliant with those elements of the town code. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it is, yes, sir.
I'm Larry Richardson-Taylor. I live on Webster Road, just north of it, Birdsong Trail. And we've lived there for forty-two years and Route 250 is like an expressway. And I have no doubt that Mr. Bravsky will, in the end, will be building a subdivision. But what bothers me the most is the access to Route 250. Why is it blacked off at Conifer Cove? Why is, I don't think you just said access to Conifer Cove and you blocked it up at 250. So, and it would be very popular with people on Conifer Cove, I'm sure. But just wondered why it's blacked off at Conifer Cove. Only access is on Webster Road.
You mean, that ended right at Webster Road? You come down Conifer to it and then back out?
Yeah, you kind of blacked off at Conifer Cove. Open head up and block it up Webster Road.
I, the intent was, see, when Conifer Cove was built, the intent was to run that road straight through. And the people that are living in there were, you know, they were opposed to it. Because all the traffic from the north of that and so on would be able to exit out there. And they didn't want the additional traffic going, so they were with that and said, well, okay, and just keep this as a separate, small eight block. So that's, that's how that, that's how that transpired. But now, I think a lot of that probably would be the result of fire marshals review on it also for fire access and so on.
The owner serves a crosswalk just to the south of that. And people came and got across the crosswalk. Cars don't stop.
Yeah, and I don't think anybody's going to disagree with you. The traffic, you're right. You're a hundred percent right. We know that. You know, it's, that, that's a state road. Does the state need to do something with it? I mean, that's beyond our control. And you're great. I understand what you're saying. I don't have a solution to it. Alls we can do is look at what's put in front of us. Does it meet the requirements? There's no variances. There's nothing necessary for us to try and modify out of that. We can't, the subdivision to, where is it? Sage Brook, is it? There's lots in there. These lots are full-size lots. You look at Sage Brook, I had a letter from one gentleman over there complaining about this. And I'm looking where he lives. His lot is almost half the size of one of these lots. They're jammed in there. It's an MHR zone. So that subdivision on that many acres probably has twice as many houses. See, so that's, that, but that, we didn't get the, we did not set the zoning. We deal with what the code says the zoning is.
My, my main concern is the access to Webster Road. And I think it should have been through Conifer Cove.
No, we'll take it. I understand. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Janice Jackman, 27, West Overdrive. When is the last time the code was updated?
I believe 2008, was it?
Yes.
Am I right with that, Judge? Remember?
Well, you don't, well, there are certain parts of the code that have been updated.
Oh, there's, yes.
Major.
Yeah, there's been parts...
So it's 2024. 2008 sounds like a long time ago. I believe that is sixteen years. Is that on the docket to consider looking at that again and updating it? Because since 2008, there's been quite a bit of development. Do we all agree?
Yeah.
Okay, so when we talk about the streets and the traffic and that you can't cross the street to hike the Birdsong Trail, the reason is because of all the development that's been allowed to go through. So when we talk about these wooded lots or these beautiful properties that many residents, many, they're not all here tonight, would love to have preserved. When we, when we defer to a plan over a decade old and we say, well, you know, the code allows for that, is it about time that given all the, I would argue, overdevelopment, you, you might just call it development, with all the development in the town, might it be time considering that these plots of land that are left for green space, for human beings to enjoy, commune with nature, to have animals? Could we, could we now, now that this number gets increasingly, you know, the number is smaller and smaller and smaller, if we keep deferring to a plan that's over a decade old by a lot, could we, could the next matter of business be that we need to update that plan and not volunteer to work on it? With anyone who wants to do so, if you're allowing for public comment.
Actually, actually, right now, you're right. Right now, they are working on updating the comprehensive plan.
Who is they?
The town.
Can I just, can I just speak and provide an update just so that everyone has the facts?
Yep, yep.
So the town did recently release a request for proposals to get some consultant assistance. Those proposals were received on Friday last week, okay?
Request, I'm sorry, request for proposals of further development? Is that what you're talking about?
No, for professional planning consulting services to help update the existing comprehensive plan.
Okay.
So town staff is in the process of reviewing and selecting consultants. And we will be publicly kicking off the project later this year.
Later this year? And an expected new plan might be mid next year?
I would say it would take at least twelve months.
Twelve months.
And there will be a lot of opportunity for public involvement.
Okay. But you understand where I'm coming from, that we, we are, the developer and those who are here tonight, we are on two opposite sides of the fence. Those of us who are here are clearly in favor of protection of green space. It is good for humans. It is good for animals. And then we have the money side, the, the development side. But we have a plan that's borderline out of date. And so when you say to me, well, look, I can show you in the plan that it says this is allowed for zoning. But again, we're talking sixteen years old and, and you've allowed so many, or the planning board, or the town, or whatever the entity is called, you have allowed so much development in this town that to say, oh, you know, I think it's about time. And I'm glad to hear you say it's, it's afoot. But the time is at hand because there are too few properties left. And yes, I have said it before, you have two types of residents here. You have humans and you have animal residents here. And they need to be taken into account. They are not fluffernutter. They are creatures that depend on us. And I'm not asking you to say every deer known to Webster. But we're talking about a property that when I am out driving, there's a lot, there's an empty lot right, right opposite Bell Arbor. Is that what it's called, Bell Arbor? And it's just open grass. And it's almost like there's a home and a home in just a free space in the middle. Sometimes when I have come out of Bell Arbor, seven o'clock, seven thirty, do you know I witness deer playing? They're playing. These are creatures that have, that have feelings and, and their, their families. And just watch a PBS show any night to get a sense of what animals are all about. They're not just, you know, fluffernutter and nobody has to take into account where they go. They cannot live in a subdivision. That is not a habitat.
Okay, we got you.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Hey, is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, sir.
David Kansnoff, 784 Daventry Circle. Thank you. I keep it real short. I don't live any, I don't live anywhere near this property. I live closer to West Webster. I can tell you that a few years ago, a large wooded area just north of where I live, on north of the Gascon, a development of single-family homes went in. And there weren't a lot of homes. My recollection is it's sixteen of them. But the habitat was destroyed. And I'm not a big damming person. But the deer need a place to live. And right now, the, our backyards on Daventry Circle because their habitat was destroyed. And they're probably crossing the street at night in the dark where it's sometimes hard to see them until they're wrapped around the front bumper. So I give serious consideration to taking down more wildlife habitat space anywhere in Webster because the wildlife has fewer places to live and they do end up in the backyards of homeowners in our wonderful town. That's all I have to say. Thanks, yours, Michael.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Deanna Slonker, 853 12th Road. Nowhere near there, but I walk through there several times a week. Also, does anyone know what happens with habitat fragmentation? All the mice stay. They carry Lyme disease and other diseases. That's how Lyme disease spreads. Not through the deer, it's through the mice. Also, why do we need a drainage management facility? That's what the trees and the vegetation are for.
Yes, sir.
I'm Dr. Bernie Marcus. I am a retired biologist, not a physician. And I've worked on a number of environmental impact projects linked to this. I just wanted to point out that with the, in spite of whatever the developer does to deal with surface and subsurface runoff, when you have a suburban development, you're going to have fertilizer, you're going to have pesticides. These are all going to run off. They're going to end up in mill point. They'll end up in the pilots being developed and it'll turn into another, basically algae. That's all. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? I want to tell you guys a little story. This is, this is going to bore you. You're going to fall asleep with this one, buddy. I think the opinion a lot of people is this board is here to just push the elephant through. I'm going to tell you a little story. Years ago, I go home after a planning board meeting. My wife's maiden name was Clint. Clint Road was a family farm back in eighteen hundreds. And I used to hear from her, what the hell are you guys doing with this? So I didn't only catch it here. When I went home, I caught it third too. So our feeling is, we're not pushing through development. We're doing what the code says we're supposed to do. That's it. Nothing more. We're not looking to push development. Your comments are all well-taken. But the reality is, this is what the code says and this is what we are.
But that was my point, right? The code says, this is the Bible. And it seems like it's...
I'm talking now. You're not talking. Sorry. I gave you a chance to talk and we listened. You just don't interrupt like that. Thank you. You're talking about me being arrogant.
No, I'm irritated. That's what I am.
Well, what do you want me to do about it?
Well, I guess, as I said before, if I can speak from the chair, we're talking about an outdated code. And there has been so much...
Hold on. You're not talking about an outdated code. This meeting is not about an outdated code, okay?
But I'm making, I'm referring back to the comment I made, that you're deferring to the code.
You're done. Stop. Anyone else wishing to speak? And your points were all, yes, ma'am, your points were all well-taken. But we're doing what the code is allowing. That's it. Yes, ma'am, again.
Thank you for letting me talk again. I don't think the problem is with the code. As my husband pointed out, and if you follow the code, which is your charge as the planning board...
We do. We do.
I, I'm not saying you don't, okay? I'm sorry you're taking it that way. That's not what, that's not what I'm saying, okay? I'm saying if you follow the code right now as it's written, you're in quite a quandary because you've got an R3, but the code is telling you something else. You've got to follow it all. Can't pick and choose, as you very well know. What's out of date is the comprehensive plan that overall hasn't been addressed since 2008. And for someone to go in and tell us that we only have a couple of trees, when one of our people went in and literally took almost the whole day to measure all those. And it was sixteen years ago. Trees grow, as we all know. So what we as a community are asking you to do is look at the whole thing and look at the code. And I believe that this development cannot go through if you follow this code. There's two parts of it. I'm not going to bore you. You probably dream of it at night. But you can't do the protecting and allow building to occur. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, we should actually, F, sir? Yeah, there's only one question, there's one, sure, there's one question somebody asked in the beginning.
Yeah, if, if the board has any specific comments they'd like us to respond to, we're happy to do that. One of them that did pop up was the state route 250 and the access. Access plans have been submitted to the state DOT for their review, their review of site distances. We did proactively reach out to the state before we came into the concept plan. And they, the state DOT came back and mentioned that there were no, no concerns with the additional access to the road.
Somebody, somebody, oh, yeah, asked a question and was going to have to address it.
The question, the gentleman asked was the one line, why isn't it straight? The property line, this other one?
That's an easy one. That, that line isn't straight. That's, that's just what has been left over. I believe there was condemnation on a portion of this property.
It was going to, an expressway was going to go through there.
Okay.
Called the Xerox.
Townhead, that's what the line.
Okay. See, somebody, you know, I said this before, I mean, the town of Webster has more open space and open lands, parklands, whatever you want to call them, than any community in Monroe County. And I see that question, are we smart doing this? Maybe the town shouldn't have taken Birdsong Trail initially. I mean, what do we do? I mean, if you didn't take it, we would be here sitting with arguing... I mean, if we didn't take it, we wouldn't be here sitting with arguing about all this. But yes, we want to preserve the land and this is what, this is what the town has been doing. But it comes back and bites us in a case like this now. And people who moved in just have stones thrown from this. Their lawns aren't even established yet. They've been complaining that there's a development going in over by Birdsong. It's frustrating, very frustrating. Anyways. All right, anyone, board members, may calls? Again, we have to, we have to make a motion for a lead agency.
Can I say something?
What?
Can I get up and say something?
Oh, I'm sorry, sure, go ahead, go ahead, uh.
Laura Johnacy, 1190 Standea Drive. The comment about the fact that we have more green space than any other place, great, we should keep it that way. Just because we have more parks around it doesn't mean we develop everything we have left. I mean, we have so much development going on in the last couple of years here. I'm just beside myself. Every time one of those signs pops up, they just go in and clear cut. So, yeah, and it is your job to deal with that stuff. And sorry, you feel like it's a burden that the town took on the Birdsong Theory Trail. You should be thankful you have that. It's an awesome place that we have in our town. So it's a good thing that we have so much green space. Keep it.
I agree.
Don't keep giving it out.
But we're not giving it out.
Well, don't keep giving it out.
This land was their land. Somebody could have bought this and made it part of the parkland. That's all I've ever said. I'm with you 100%. I'm saying a person buys it-
That's not all you said, but I'm not going to argue with you. I'm not arguing with you.
The land is zoned in such a way that the applicant is entitled to build. And in this case here, there's no variances. There's nothing requested other than to meet the code with eight houses. That's it.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, uh. No, go ahead.
I'm Rodney Geisreck. I live in Conifer Cove. And I'm a relatively new, you know, resident here. But, and I realize this might be out of the question, but surely the developer has a price in mind where he would be agreeable to selling it to the town, given the fact that so many people are so captivated by the conservation and the habitat value of this piece of property. And I'd have to admit, I am too. And I don't think that I'm going to be living here that long, but I feel that I wouldn't be doing people service if I didn't step up and say that this is a pretty important piece of property for the future. And why is there no discussion about buying the property of the developer? I mean, at some point, you get to a price where, if he's not willing to sell, what's he up to? I mean, what does he care? If it's only money, offering the money unless you say that it's not that important to the town, which is a fair thing for you to say. But I'm just, I just find it interesting that there's no discussion about the alternative.
Those are kind of, as we've had that before, you know, people is like, his property is Belle, why doesn't the town buy it? Why can it, how can the town buy it? I don't want to pay taxes for more property. Whoever lives there, if you want to save it, people, somebody could buy it and use it for wherever.
But it's a price that's set. I mean, it's only five acres. I mean, what is the real estate value for five acres of property?
So suppose all the neighbors around there chipped in $100,000 apiece, you could buy it and keep it. Make it a parkland. But I heard, and I heard, but I heard, maybe this is a rumor, but I heard that the developer didn't want to sell. But that doesn't make sense.
The price has to be right, though.
Right, I mean, if the price is right, he's almost obligated to sell. Unless he has other things in mind. Okay, thank you. Okay. Appreciate it.